Sorry, one sec. Why is this so loud again? All right, good evening everybody. This time we will call our February 28, 2023 work session to order. Jamie, could you please read the Sunshine statement and call the roll?
Be advised that proper notice has been given by the Township Council in accordance with the Sunshine Law in the following matter. Notice advertised in the Burlington County Times and Camden Carrier Post on January 6, 2023 and posted on the bulletin board on the same date. Mrs. Apia Do?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Jenny?
Here.
Mr. Lyon?
Here.
Mr. Burrow?
Here. Good evening everybody. First up, we have to deviate from our agenda and walk on an executive session to discuss litigation. This is Duff, litigation regarding Duff versus Delran Township. I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2023-50 that's authorizing the executive session.
I make a motion?
Second.
Jamie, could you call the roll please?
Mrs. Apia Do?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Jenny?
Should I abstain or abstain?
What's your, what's your vote?
Abstain.
Abstention, okay.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Burrow?
Aye. The ayes have it. A motion carries. Resolution is adopted. At this time, we'll go into the council chambers, have our executive session. So folks with us will be hopefully back very quickly.
Where's my agenda? Hold on one second, too many papers. We're back on. All right, we're back on the record. I'll take, entertain a motion to exit closed and come back to our normal meeting.
So moved.
Motion to reconvene.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. We are reconvene. Thank you, Lynn, we got that exception. All right, first off, we have our work session. We have one item tonight, and that's a review of the Stewart Ave improvements, so.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. We're going to ask Ed to go over the phasing of this. We received a grant, as you know, from DOT late last year. This, in this capital budget, will, will have funding for, for work to be done. I think originally, we, most of us thought that we were going to do maybe in two or three phases, but Ed has a much more pragmatic engineering approach to this. And Ed, if you would please, thank you.
All right, thank you, Joe. So I'm just going to go over a brief overview of what we're doing for Stewart Avenue. As Joe mentioned, we received municipal aid funding for a portion of the work that we're going to be doing. What our recommendation is, is to actually complete all the underground infrastructure work as part of Phase One of this project, which would incorporate replacing the existing storm sewer infrastructure where, where needed along the entire street. And I've also had a meeting along with, with Joe with the Associated Utilities, that be New Jersey American Water and PSCNG regarding either relocating their mains and/or replacing. So PSCNG just informed me again the other day that they're, they submitted a request to actually replace the entire gas main along Stewart Avenue. And they're the tie-ins to the associated streets. Now, based off of our review of the base map and the existing infrastructure, there appears to actually be a conflict with some of the water main on the street. So we're in communication with American Water about relocating that if we need to replace our infrastructure and to have it relocated, just so it's not in conflict.
What does conflict, what does that mean?
Meaning, for example, if you, if you look at the first page of the 11 by 17 sheets I gave you, starting at River Drive, going towards St. McHale, there's actually a water main that appears to run over top of our storm sewer. And based off of field observation, it also appears that the water main runs through one of our structures. So that's something that we're actually going to be on, on the site on Thursday to confirm that as well and make sure there's no other existing conflicts.
Okay.
So generally speaking, at minimum, we're thinking probably two years. So hopefully this fall, we'll put this out the bid, redo all the stormwater infrastructure. PSCNG is going to come in ahead of time, get all their gas main out of the way, and then we'll have to coordinate with American Water about having their stuff relocated prior to our work starting.
Phase One is two years?
Phase One. So then Phase Two and/or Three is replacement of all the concrete curb and gutter. We're actually going to be proposing to put back curb and gutter in some locations due to the low slopes, replacing all the driveway aprons, all the handicap ramps, relocating the mid-block crossing that's near the park, so it's a little safer, and then reconstructing the entire roadway to eliminate any issues, settlement, et cetera.
It's a complete reconstruction?
Complete reconstruction, yes. Anybody have any questions?
Phase Two is one year.
So Phase Two, it can turn into an entire roadway length of about 2,800 linear feet of replacement of all concrete and reconstruction, or we can split it up into two phases where you do basically half the road one year and then half the road the next year, depending on how the township would like to proceed.
Okay, is there any questions from council?
What's the impact going to be on the flooding down there?
So that's one of the, one of the issues that we've noticed so far in reviewing it is there appears to be isolated low spots. So ultimately speaking, Stewart Avenue is affected by, you know, the tidal influence that the creek has. So there's actually an outfall that goes out from Stewart Avenue. So this inlet at the end of River Drive actually has an outfall that goes about a couple hundred feet into the creek. So when the tides are, you know, above that outfall pipe, there's no water that's going to be getting out. But ultimately, we're going to replace anything that's damaged and/or broken and then modify the slopes to where you don't have ponding water in front of people's properties. You know, obviously, there may be flooding that still takes effect, but we're going to mitigate it as best we can.
Great, any other questions?
Just one quick one. I mean, in a perfect world, like a project of this size, typically how long would it take?
From if we did it all at once?
Yeah.
We did it all at once, I would say probably, I'm looking at six months. That's, that's if you did all the underground work all at once and then you came back and paved it all in the same year. So you're going to, you would generally go underground, then you would do concrete improvements, and then you'd come back and pave it. So we're just, we're, we're considering just breaking it up a little bit.
Yeah, the problem is we ran, you know, if, depending on the weather, if American Water and PSCNG gets held up. Right, that seems much good.
So PSCNG is actually hoping to be in there this summer. That was their goal. American Water, that's going to be another conversation they need to have to see what their timeline is. Our goal was to have a project ready to be awarded by, by July.
July 4th.
Yeah, yep. That's what I promised you.
We approved the, if you recall, back in July, we approved the design for this.
Yes.
So hopefully, we're out to bid with all of our roadwork by July 4th. And another note on Stewart, Ed and I have been talking, but I think one night, what we're going to do as we get closer to the project, being let for public bidding, I think what we're going to do is have like a town hall type meeting here one evening where we just lay the plans out on the table, invite all the residents from up and down Stewart to come in and see how the improvement project will be affecting their particular property and what they can expect. Because, you know, face facts that we're going to, for the next couple of years, there's going to be some, some disruptions in, in their neighborhood for a little while in order to make these, these improvements. So we're looking to do that, hopefully, probably May in that time span, span.
Yeah, we talked about that before, Joe. I think that's a great idea to get all the questions answered, Tom.
Yeah, the only, I mean, I look at things practically. I'm assuming if we break it up and don't do it all at once, there'll be less of an impact overall to the residents, like than trying to scramble the whole leg at once.
Yeah, it won't be moving as fast-paced per se. We'll be, the, the main reason to do it this way is to just make sure that you get all the settlement out of the way with your trenches, and it gives some time for the utility companies to actually get in there and do their improvements. So PSCNG sounds like they're fast-tracked, but I don't know how long American Water, it'd take to get in there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so if there's no other questions, I think this looks great. I mean, I think generally, the faster the better, but, you know, I understand the phased approach. We've done this before with American Water and PSCNG, you know, give them time to do it right. We don't want to do all this work, spend all this money, and they come back and say, "Ed, we need to get into that street, fix that pipe you just fixed the street on," so.
Joe and I have been in direct communication with both utilities to make sure that doesn't happen. Joe and I have been in direct communication with both utilities to make sure that doesn't happen.
A smart plan, so I think we're just forward, forward, right? Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Ed. Joe, anything else with that?
No, no, that was, that's the big one, it's, no, that's the big one.
Okay, great. All right, next up, we have our ordinance, says this is ordinance 2023-05, an ordinance to establish salaries for various employees within the Township of Delran Police Department and the Township of Delran County of Burlington, State of New Jersey, and regulating the man, regulating the manner of payment of same. I'll entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
I'll second.
Jamie, please.
Mrs. Apia Do.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Jenny.
Aye.
Mr. Lyon.
Aye.
Mr. Burrow.
Aye, motion carries, the ordinance is introduced. It'll be in our next meeting for adoption. Next up, we have our consent agenda. Council, is there any objections to the items within the consent agenda? Seeing, hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Jamie, please.
Mrs. Apia Do.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Jenny.
Aye.
Mr. Lyon.
Aye.
Mr. Burrow.
Aye, the ayes have it, motion carries, and the consent agendas and the items within are adopted. Next up, we have our reports. Up first is our Township Administrator, Joe Alina. Joe?
Don't report this evening, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Next up, our Township Clerk, Jamie Agers. Jamie?
Just real quick, I met with Ashley from the Red Cross this week, and she just wanted me to thank council for our continued support of the blood drive. We had our last drive, and even though they had to shut down early because the room was a little warm, they still collected above their, you know, goal. So she just wanted me to thank everyone.
Great.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Next up, we have our mayor, Mayor Katremo.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I had a, a report prepared, but everyone's been so nice. In, in lieu of a report, I'd just like to mention that my father-in-law, who lived with us for several years, passed last night peacefully in his sleep. I would just ask that you would keep my wife and her brother and his grandchildren in your prayers. That's my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up, we have, from our Solicitor's Office, Mark Tavik, anything?
No report.
Thank you. Next stop, from our engineer, from CME Associates. Ed, do we have anything?
Yes, I have two things I want to touch on. First, we have the Route 130 sewer line back out to bid. The bids we're gonna be received on March 22nd. In addition to that, we also have the municipal building painting out to bid as well. I actually have a pre-bid meeting on Thursday for that, and that will also be received on the 22nd as well.
Great, thank you, Ed, appreciate everything. Next up, we have reports from council. First up is Councilman Nikki Apia Do. Councilman, any report for tonight?
Well, only thing I want to say is congratulations again to Andrew Marino for his Eagle Scout.
Yes.
Award, that's it.
Great, thank you. Next up, we have Councilman Marlo Smith. Councilman?
Uh, yeah, just real quick, I know that we've had up and down weather this winter season. I know it's been warm, I know yesterday was a day where we did have some weather. And now, as I was out and about, I did see, you know, a couple of, you know, folks kinda, you know, driving, I would say, a little faster than the weather probably should have, you know, allowed for, and, you know, I just wanna just remind residents to, you know, take it easy, especially when we do have weather. I know it's been unusual, it's been warm, but just be careful as you're out and about. End of report.
Thank you, Councilman. Next up, this is Councilman Lynn Jenny. Councilman?
Thank you, Council President. I just also want to congratulate Andrew Marino, Eagle Scout. Mayor, council members were asked to attend, and we were happy to do so. He's, you know, it's very impressive, and we have two troops in Delran. Troop 17, which Mr. Marino is a member of, and Troop 25. Just to give you an idea of this young man, and we have a great future look forward to with him. He was in high school, he was in a marching band, concert band, the Ornithological Society of Delran, the Principals List, honor roll, All South Jersey Orchestra, All South Jersey Concert Band, Western Burlington County State Nationals in marching band. He volunteered at the food pantry, and, you know, he's a junior firefighter at Delran Fire Department, and he also serves at Good Shepherd Church. They work very, very hard to achieve this goal, and it's a major goal in any young man's life. I would urge any parent who has a young man, and if you want to do something very positive for their life, look into one of our troops, our scout troops. It's a wonderful organization to belong to. It'll help that young man to become a, a very responsible and respectful young man. And that's my report, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And next up, we have our Vice President of Council, Sir Tom Lyon. Is the Vice President?
Thank you, Council President. Condolences to the mayor and his wife's family on their loss. And also, I was at the Eagle Scout ceremony, and not, you know, what everybody said is great, but it showed the kid, the young man's character when the elderly gentleman with the walker was gonna come up and present him an award, and was gonna have to come up to the podium, and he said, "How about if I come to you, sir?" You know, so that was kinda nice, you know? But then, in, in, in spirit of an old World War II type guy, he said, "Nah, I can make it." So it, it was good. So it was, it was a nice ceremony, and I did appreciate being invited. I'm, I'm glad I was able to come. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Next up from my report, just also wanna condolences to the mayor and his family. Sorry to hear about that. And also wanna make for the record, congratulate Walt Bauer, who is our Township File, File, Fire Official and Emergency Management Coordinator, who has notified us, the mayor, right, and folks here in the township this week that he is retiring. He's been here for a long, long time. I've got to know him pretty well through the work with the RAC. He's been very, very involved with that, and he's always on top of his game. First one there, probably, right, Colin? I think he's the first one at the, the events, making sure everything is safe. So we thank him for his many years of service to the township and wish him a happy retirement. I think he's going to the Poconos, so that'll be fun. So with that, that is everyone's comments. Everybody good?
Mr. President, just wanna let everybody know, our engineer, Ed, he too is an Eagle Scout.
There we go, that makes two of us up here, Ed. Good. When did you get your Eagle? Because it was asked at the Eagle Ceremony.
2009, so.
That's good. That's good, stays with you forever.
Yeah, it does.
They say you don't just get it, you're, it's a lifetime. You're always an Eagle Scout, is what they say. Awesome, so now we'll entertain a motion to open up public comment.
I'll make a motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
As opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, we're now open for public comment. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand, and you will be recognized. At that time, you may approach the, you may approach the podium and state your name and address for the record. All remarks should be directed to council. An individual speaker is allotted five minutes of time, and all statements are part of the public record, both written and audio-recorded and video-recorded, and cannot be redacted or retracted after the fact. Is there any public comments? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to close the floor.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
As opposed? Motion carries, floor is now closed. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As opposed?